Now we'll get to roll call.
Mayor Connie Ball, Vice Mayor Mike Profit, Alderman Jeff Fancher, Alderman Mike Hansel, Alderman Bobby Knight, Alderman Steve Smith, City Attorney Terry Hurst, City Administrator James Fincham.
The next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I hear a motion to approve the minutes.
I make the motion.
Got a motion in second. On favor say aye. Okay. Okay, the next thing, what I'd like to do is we've got a special guest here tonight, and we're going to recognize our newest placement in town. And so with Justin Vincent, I'd like for you to come up here with him. Sawyer. Would you allow me to get in your wits real quick, Mr.? Let's get a head shake.
He should have given all the man's papers stolen.
How about if we put him on, let him stand on the table?
Then he might be walking in.
That'd be okay too.
Get that wireline going, don't let him get him in here.
Damn, not easy, brother.
I'm going, we're going to say a little thing on just go back and just make work at the car ready.
It's hot over here in the floor.
Okay, now it's going to be like a black thing. Not black, just a little sticky here. So you want to come and point that right here in another picture, can you hold that up for me? You can tell you're a movie star already, he knows the road. You get it then, okay? So you keep that, you're going to take that home with you. That's yours, keep it. Okay, Jeff, what's going on with you, Justin?
Basically, back at the end of August, I was just doing my normal school dismissal traffic at Aitken Beach, or excuse me, Aitken Ruble. And all of a sudden, a little boy in a full police uniform shows up on the corner of his yard, and he, everything that I did, he done it as well. So if I tell a car to go this way, he done the same thing. I tell him to stop this way, he tell him to stop. And it just grew from there. He started showing up with a whistle, blowing the whistle. Ended up having an extra vest to match mine, got that for him, got him some cones. And he just puts those out every single day. He waits for me to get there to start school traffic. Whenever I set my cones out at the end of the grammar school parking lot, he'll set his out in his yard. He'll put them at an angle just like I do mine. And whenever I walk to the intersection, he'll walk to the corner of his yard. And it's just grew from there.
It's got on worse nights than you, but I want to tell you all one thing now. If you think he can fill his shoes, Justin Vincent, you're wrong. He's under size 22. He'll never fill his shoe, but he might be able to sleep in them or something. Hot, dirty, red. Just give me his old shoes, women make flower pots out of them. Rocky, we're going to have to tell you.
Rocky, wasn't I doing wrong?
There's not getting any sound though.
The computer's turned to the speakers and not just you.
If you get on our left, I hope you're doing pretty good.
Lawman and his pint-sized deputy who hopes to Sunday have been on a real badge, but for now, he's happy to learn the beat from a seasoned veteran. This story, by the way, comes to us from a viewer in Tennessee and is part of our series, Those Who Serve.
I would grow up and I'd be a police officer.
Run afoul of a law and you just might come face to face with Sawyer Schimmin in another 17 years or so.
I'll rub her hand and put her right in and slap this back in.
He's only four, but he's ready with uniform.
We wear it when there's emergency.
Whistle.
You can hear when I pull it so out that I'm doing traffic.
And a partner. And together, they hit the streets of Newport, Tennessee after school.
It first started out, it's just an acquaintance, but then now it's turned into Sawyer using as his buddy and they're partners.
Sergeant Justin Vincent is a 14-year veteran of the Newport PD and a resource officer at the school across the street from Sawyer's house.
My main job is to make sure all the kids are safe. If nothing else, be that smile, be that hug, or be that one positive reinforcement of a police officer that they may encounter.
He's a partner, I help him.
Every afternoon, Sawyer counts down the minutes.
The time of traffic.
And runs out the front door when Officer Vincent arrives. They place their cones and direct traffic side by side. Officer Vincent takes the lead, but Sawyer follows every move.
It makes your heart swell, you know, that you can make a difference in one child's life.
A little boy and a policeman.
Sergeant Vincent to Officer Sawyer?
Yes, there's emergency.
Who together serve, protect, and delight. Streets of Newport, Tennessee, pretty safe tonight. Reminder, if you have a good story about someone who serves with police, military, fire, some other calling, we'd love to hear from you on our Facebook page. That is nightly news for this Monday night, less horrible. Thank you for watching.
Would you, the parents like to stand up back there too and introduce yourself? Oh, introduce yourself.
I'm Brian Schimmings, Sawyer's father.
And I'm Allison Manus, so we're friends.
We got another one there for a little.
This is Sage, his sister, his little sister.
Thank you all for taking the time to come do that, that means a lot. Justin, thank you for the time you take to make our community better. Thank you.
No problem, sir.
Thank you all. All right, we got just a minute to recognize a few things here. It won't take just a minute. Recognize already the citizens, but one of the things, sort of when I'm riding around town, looking around stuff, and I see positive things going on in our town. And I would just like to read a few. The people's cleaning up, doing things positive in Newport, and I just want to let them know that we appreciate what they're doing. There's been a lot of improvement on a lot of things. And I also saw where Gaylord Thomas had written a little article in the paper there about improvements, and so her list was sorted sort of like mine, but anyway, some of the things that I've noticed that's been improvement, one of the things, Allison Manus at the old Theater Guild building, called Fruitjar Alley, where Roger Fish has cleaned up, where Judge Porter had the old car lot, making room for now, where that looks so much better, tail's looking a lot better with that. Where Commercial Bank is cleaned up in Bryant Town, made a big difference. Where the kickladder boys, Justin Kickladder, Matthew Kickladder, were getting ready to put their pharmacy or doctor's office, which is going to be a big plus for downtown, getting that stuff cleaned up. The ice cream parlor, the rest of the cow, they're cleaned that up, made that look a lot better. And also going to improve the apartments upstairs, redo them, and clean that whole block up there where Giles Automotive used to be, so we appreciate that. Noni Barnes cleaned up an eyesore up on Jefferson Avenue that looked like a shitty dump, and how about 12 loads of trash in there. He's redone the house, looks so much better. Resurrection Boxing, if y'all cleaned that building up, putting new onlands on it, things are looking a lot better downtown. The River Walk's beginning to take shape again. He took three other people, once one of them began to start cleaning up, they've been, took three more cleaning up. I've been talking to Tim and Gary, and they've been working on, starting again on that River Walk down through there. The Naughty Vine Winery, Max Movement, the Dank Place, Fix the Sail, Care and Touch Therapy, and also would like the Christmas parade with Lucas and all the people from the Chamber did a real good job on the Christmas parade. Also like to thank James Fincham and Cindy Motors for their participation on the Christmas dinner for the employees. And I'm just making a difference. Y'all did a good job with it. Okay, now we're ready to move on. Okay, next we've got the communications from the city administrator.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I don't have anything to communicate this year, other than that we hope, on behalf of me and my staff here at City Hall, we hope that everyone has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Appreciate the job y'all do out there, all the time. Appreciate it. All right, the next thing will be a consideration of appointment of the police civil service. I reckon that's already been taken care of. And William David Profit, Dave Profit, we know him, is back on the civil service for the police department.
That's the one, Mr. Vice Mayor, that's the one the council appoints, so he needs to be reappointed by council. He said he'd like to be reappointed.
I thought the mayor did that.
Well, no, it's council, because it's a paid position.
All in favor of?
Motion to appoint.
I made a motion to appoint Mr. Profit back to the police civil service board. I second.
On favor, say aye. Here are no notes, so you keep me Dave Profit, he does a good job, I'm glad he's there. All right, the next report, committee's Tanner Preservation Alliance, you got anything, Ms. Carlin?
We have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Keep Cock County Beautiful. I seen Miss Mika back there.
We just want to take a moment and just introduce you all to our new assistant director that we've hired. I'm no longer a one-woman show, I've got some help in the office, and her name's Greta Carr. I'm going to let her just, you know, say whatever she needs to, but I'm thankful for her and for the work that she's been doing. She's stepped in and helping with the office work while I'm out and about, teaching kids about not littering and recycling and everything, so she's been a great asset.
I think y'all do a good job, and I've seen Greta working and stuff, Greta, we appreciate what you do. She's not just a talker, she's a worker too.
Thank you, sir, thank you for saying so, yeah. It's absolutely amazing, all the work that Mika has been doing all this time, kind of on her own. She's been doing the work of three people for Keep Cock County Beautiful, and I'm just in the office a couple days a week, I'm there Wednesdays and Thursdays. But if you all have any questions or concerns or want to reach out, I'll leave some cards back here in the back of the room before we go and pick that up, and feel free to give us a call and reach out to us. I'm very excited to be back with Keep Cock County Beautiful and very proud of all the work that we're doing. We're teamed up with the local sheriff's department and a few other local organizations looking to do some things to beautify the community, and are also so proud of all the things that everybody, all of our citizens, are doing around downtown and all around the county, just creating a better place for all of us and our future of our children. Thank you all for all your support.
Appreciate all y'all doing. Want to say a special thanks to Dave Verdahl too.
That's right.
I reckon he's gone to Georgia, or either tonight or tomorrow, I talked to him a while ago. If it wasn't for him, a lot of times our town would drown in our own trash, so that's tremendous help. Thank you ladies too.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, one thing I'd like to point out, for those that may not know, Greta's mother, Camille, was the very first director of Keep Cock County Beautiful. She also went on a trip that I was honored to be a part of back in 93, where we went to Chattanooga and met with the state, Keating, Tennessee, beautiful folks, and worked on getting us a charter started here in Newport. She went on that trip and subsequently was the first director and was for many years the director of Keep Cock County Beautiful. So she's a legacy person.
She was one of the original supporters way back then, weren't you?
I was on that board for a while.
That's right, yes, sir.
But I just wanted to point that out, that she's kind of come back home and keeping up the legacy of her mother.
Thank you, thank you for all the work you do. I believe Mr. Lucas Graham's got something. Comment.
We didn't rehearse tonight like normal. In September, the board voted to approve the change of Cherry Street to Tevitt Way. What we intended to do that night was a package deal for Cherry to Tevitt and Kimwood at the bend of Cope, right where the railroad track comes around there at the corner, was going to be changed to RGE Boulevard down to the sharp turn at the end, and then it would be Kimwood all the way up to Industrial Boulevard. We couldn't do it that night, and it's both our faults, but we should have gotten it on the agenda before now, because we had a request from RGE to go ahead and process that change, because they had a, because their founder, right? They had an important VIP in town, and they wanted him to be able to see that the road had been changed, so if you all could please consider voting to change.
We need to vote on it.
Yes, sir, what we need to do is add it to our agenda, new business, so we need a motion to amend the rules, to add that issue to the agenda, so the council can consider that here in a few minutes.
Okay, we've got that.
I make the motion.
Bob's got the motion, Jeff seconded it.
And all approved.
All approved, say aye.
So we'll add that to the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you all for what you're doing too, that's going to make a big difference here. It's getting, start the city tomorrow, getting, put sign for the, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Lucas?
Yeah.
Joe, do you have something as well?
No, no, I didn't, just was going to say if anyone had any questions.
Well, the Vice Mayor, we didn't actually vote on changing it yet.
Okay, we're about to change the rules.
Yeah, so we have added it to the agenda. If we want to go ahead and do it now, that'd be fine, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Steve will make the motion. Steve made the motion.
Second.
Mike seconded it. All in favor, say aye. We got you now.
All right, we're good.
It don't take us long, we get it. Okay, old business, Mr. Hurst is going to read the ordinance of unfinished business, sir.
Yes, sir. We have three ordinances to consider on second reading. The first one is consideration of, on the second reading of ordinance number 2017-18, amending the zoning map for the city of Newport, R-2 medium-density residential to C-2 general commercial district located at Jaybird Street. Need a motion and a second and a roll call on the ordinance.
You need a roll call, Steve, that's okay.
I make the motion, we accept.
Okay, Bobby seconded it. Okay, roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher. Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Profit.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor, the second ordinance is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2017-19, amending the zoning map for the city of Newport from R-2 medium-density residential to C-2 general commercial district located at Locust Street.
Did I hear a motion, accept that?
I make that motion.
You got a motion, Mr. Fancher?
Second.
You got a second, Mike Hansel? Roll call, please.
Alderman, sorry.
It don't matter.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
And then the third ordinance is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2017-20, amending municipal code Title V Municipal Finance and Taxation, Chapter 3 Purchasing Policy.
Did I hear a motion, accept that?
I make a motion.
We got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
We also got Mike Copenhay here. Mike, I'd like for you to stand up back there, please, just a minute, for Dr. Copenhay. I just want to tell you, the city appreciates what you're doing, cleaning up the old houses and cleaning up around your place there, making your parking lot and stuff. We just wanted to tell you, that's another positive thing for our city, but cleaning it, thank you for what you did, Mike, for what it does. Thank you. Keep the bed in there. Okay, new business, you going to read those too?
Yes, sir, certainly will. The first matter of new business is consideration of resolution 2017-18, adopting the program policies and procedures for the city of Newport, 2017 Home Rehabilitation Program.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just for the record, most of y'all, probably not Steve, are aware that we, every year or two years when we become eligible, we always apply for and generally receive the home rehabilitation grant. We did receive that again for this year, and this is just a housekeeping thing that you have to do, that says that you will follow the policies and procedures that are required to go along with that grant program. And also, just for the, for public knowledge, we hope to begin taking applications for the home grant in late January to early February in 2018. We will be publicizing that on Facebook and also in local media, so folks that are interested in that can keep their eyes peeled, you know, through those venues to find out when we will be taking applications for those, for that project.
That's our first, gentlemen. We don't care, you're doing fine. You're better than being kicked out of here for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need a motion, now, vote on it.
Did I hear a motion, we accept that?
I make that motion.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Okay, I reckon the animal shelter, to my knowledge, if I tell you, is that right, Mr. Fancher?
We've not got the, we've still got another.
We've got more and more resolutions, Vice Mayor, I'll read that one. It's consideration of resolution 2017-19, Lead-Based Paint Inspection Services for the City of Newport, 2017 Home Rehabilitation Program.
Again, this is just a program, you have to have these houses that, that get approved for the grant process, you have to have those inspected, and this is just something that you have to approve every time you get the grant. Again, you have to, just like the previous resolution that y'all voted on, this is one of those things that has to be voted on to move forward with the grant.
Did I hear a motion, we accept that?
Make a motion.
Steve, got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight. Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Another thing, well, Gary, I want you to be working on that rehabilitation thing. You know, we talked about fixing some windows and stuff in some of the stores downtown. I talked to some people Saturday, and I told them to get in touch with you, you know, we've got some that might be able to help them. You've already helped them on some things, but some of these stores are a little bit dilapidated and nobody's fixing. If we can get the windows and stuff fixed and take the plywood out of them, it's going to help, looks a lot, so.
I was just talking to Mika before, she's still here, she not? I was just talking to Mika before the meeting about that grant and the funding, so she and I are going to work on a couple of other applications that have come in, but if anybody out there is looking to do some kind of facade repair or modification, we can just fill out that paperwork.
Was you ever able to get ahold of Mike up at these tents?
Yes, sir, he took the paper, hadn't spoken with us.
Okay, I'll spur him next. And the Overholt building, I talked to the Overholt Saturday and told them they need to get on the ball just a little bit too, if they wanted some help, so work with them and whatever you can do. I appreciate what you're doing, Gary, thank you.
And now, Mr. Vice Mayor, on to what you were bringing up. Last week, the Friends brought an amended contract and dropped it off for an agreement between the city and them about the animal shelter. When I read through it, it still, it had, it still didn't have the changes we needed. I personally took it back to them, showed them what needed to be changed, and they said they would fix it and get it back to me, but as of 5:00 this afternoon, it had not come back, and that was last week, so I don't have anything for you to vote on.
Right. Okay, what about any bids, purchase expenses?
None today.
Communication, citizen, we got any citizens that'd like to speak?
I have a question. This might be a stupid question, but I've lived in Javer all my life, I'm 61, it's always been gray. What constitutes a street and road? Does it make difference that it says here Jaybird Street instead of Jaybird Road?
Could you answer that, Mr. Robson?
Yes, really, the, I think there's a portion of Javer Road that the address is say road, and the other portion says street. They're the same thing, there's no difference between the two, other than the way that they, the 911 office, I guess, this, and I'm sure if you wanted to have a change straighter road, Boulevard, this council could go through that process.
Well, I mean, the most of the address is road, it's where this is, where this is. So I'm just.
When I looked at the district property's assets website, this particular property was listed as a street. And, you know, there's no difference between the two, other than.
Why you spell it? Why you spell it?
I think we could be consistent with it by talking that over. I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, but I've known this Jaybird Road all my life as well, so.
I mean, there's other issues going on with the rocky lines on that street, so, you know, if we can, you know, eliminate the confusions, I haven't, a street and road at the same place, I think.
You might check on that, Mr. Robson, for, okay?
Maybe y'all can work it together. I got one thing to say, as a citizen, on behalf of the library board. The library board owns the Porter property. It was, it was given by Judge Porter to the library. Bottom line is, the library owns it. There is a push to possibly build a new library. Let's use a baseball analogy, we haven't got the first base on that yet. There's going to be, was it Fish Excavating that did the work there, that asbestos laden building, and dirt was removed without hitch, and at budget for the library board. There's a big push and a lot of public talk about building a new library down on the lower end of that, of that parcel, with possibly selling the top part to a developer. There will be some signs going up here real soon, talking about a future possible home of the Cock County Newport Library. There's no official name of that. That's not saying there's going to be one, but also on that sign, there's going to say donations will be accepted through a particular office, through the library board. So on behalf of the library board, it is our wish to build a new library. The one we have now is undersized, parking is very inefficient, so I'm here to tell you, because people are asking, when are they going to have the library done? Well, we haven't even got, barely got out the batter's box. So there is a wish and there is a push to do just that, but it's a long way down the road, but I think that the people on the library board are all unanimous that we do want to improve our current library, and as Coach Profit said, that whole, tearing that down has really made a big improvement in the aesthetics of that street and that area.
We're trying to also solicit people to be on a committee and be in chairman and chairman of the county. We're trying to also solicit people to be on a committee and be in chairman. They called a bunch of people, trying to figure out ways to raise money, so that's one of the things. And if somebody that's interested in the, like I say, we're putting the cart before the horse, but there's people interested in buying the old library that the Library Board owns. Anyway, it's a long way to go, but it's, you gotta start somewhere if you're gonna finish somewhere.
We're figuring two million dollars to build a new library, so we, that's a lot of donors to sell.
Can I ask a question? Is the library's board five oh one C thirty?
I would think they would be. I don't know the exact answer to that.
It's sort of a complicated mess just a little bit. I can't tell you whether, what you said, but I can tell you that it's, it's in the school board's name. The land, they had to do it like that years ago. That sounds crazy to have, the library board owns it, but it's in the, the school board's name as far as the, on the deeds and stuff, so I'm sure there'll be money for that.
There, there, I guess you're leading to possible grants and things such as that, or why, why you ask that?
Oh, well, I do a lot of research on grants, and there are some grants out there that fund libraries.
Sure.
We'll get your name put on that list.
Well, we, we do know that the state will give a hundred thousand dollars towards the new, the building, the library. We have money saved up, I don't know where, you know, the money of that, but hopefully selling the current Stokely Memorial Library will bring who knows what in this, in this downtown area, but we've, we want to do it, and I think, and I think the citizens want it done as well. So just stay tuned to that, but if somebody asks you, that's the, the Library Board's stance, as we stand right now.
Gary, you worked on that, too, and had to get grants, too. You and Carleen have that built.
Get that number for Christmas, Gary.
No, I'll just put that on the list.
Is there anybody else got something to say? You boys got anything, or? Okay, did I hear a motion?
You added, you added to the agenda about the road, the, the name change on the...
We already voted on it.
We went ahead and voted on it.
Yes.
We did.
Steve made the motion, Mike.
I would say that about ten times now, every year, not bad. I hear a motion, if we adjourned. Did I hear a second? We got a motion, second, adjourned. All in favor? Say aye.